I'd ask you to join me in saying my pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, our nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is the item I'd ask you to call the roll, please.
David Burris.
Here.
Ray Eckert. Bill Lupin.
Here.
Bob Nelson.
Here.
Ron Richards.
Here.
Alexton Ritterbusch.
Here.
Craig Romi.
Present.
Caitlin Turner.
Here.
Okay, we do have a forum. Next item is the adoption of the agenda. I do have one amendment to the agenda. And I ask if you move to remove item D. Melanie Adcock has removed her request and there's no need to set a hearing. So I accept the motion to approve the amended agenda removing item D under new business.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda removing item D under new business.
Second. They moved and seconded to approve the amended agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. The agenda is approved. And again, I remind the council, if there's a conflict of interest on any of the items that we'll be voting on tonight, I would ask that you notify the entire council prior to voting. You have in your packages the minutes from the January 21st council meeting. I'd ask for a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from January 21st council meeting. Second.
They moved and seconded to approve those minutes. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. The minutes are approved. We have under claims our bills in between for $119,934.40. I'd ask for a motion to approve those bills in between.
Make a motion to approve bills in between for the amount of $119,934.40.
Second. They moved and seconded to approve the bills in between. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Bills in between are approved. Current claims for $57,499.44. Ask for a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve current claims for $57,449.44.
Second.
They moved and seconded to approve the current claims. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Current claims are approved. You have in your packages an amendment to the amount for the 2019 accounts payable. We've added the repairs that are charged to rocks excavating for help cleaning out and flushing some lines as a result of the water main break that we had across there from Baumgar's. The city is not allowed to go on private property. And that bill is for $561.23. Public Works Engineer has provided an explanation of that. I would ask for a motion to approve the 2019 accounts payable charges for $1501.46.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2019 accounts payable for $1,000.41. Second.
They moved and seconded to approve that amended accounts payable. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That is approved. We move on to our Wells Fargo credit card claims for $4,203.30. I'd ask for a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve the Wells Fargo credit card claims, the amount of $4,203.30.
Second. They moved and seconded to approve those claims. Any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Those are approved. Our next item on the agenda is communications from the public. Susie, are you here?
Yep.
Okay. It's hard to see out there, so... And we may have to interrupt you. We do have a scheduled hearing at 7:10, 7:20, 7:30, and 7:40.
Susie Hayes. Susie Hayes, Dirk Publicization. You should have in your packet an Excel spreadsheet listing the, since we have 10 abatement requests right now. Two for the City of Hot Springs, one for Dawn and Kathy Oldstad, four under Holt Holmes, one under Frank Rasmussen, one Mark Mekus, and one Julie Miller. They're all listed on your spreadsheet with the, if you look at the abatement region, it tells you why we're doing it. We've done these before in the past. Before this time of year, once we get that tax bill, we can make an adjustment. So most of these are going from taxable to exempt, or exempt to taxable, and then three of them are rekindifiers.
Okay. Is there any questions from anyone on the council concerning these charges, abeyments? Okay. We will then vote on these later. We don't have any questions, so thank you very much.
Do you need me to stay for them all day, or...?
If there is some discussion and a question that comes up, I'd ask that you, I'll stay until that, that is approved. Thank you. Next item is communications from the public, and I notice that we have some issues or questions requests concerning the West Oak building. I just want to provide a quick update. Our city administrator has gone out and asked for some cost estimates to get some engineering done to both save the front facade of the building along with what it would cause for safe demolition of the remainder of the building. The demolition costs are approximately $2,000 to design that, and $1,200 charge to brace that front facade so that it could be saved. I did check today. We did check with our attorney today, again, and the Fall River Sheriff's Office. The execution of judgment has been issued, but the Fall River Sheriff Department is having a little bit of difficulty knowing how to go ahead and proceed. I ask that that effort be expedited, meaning that we do have an emergency situation here. And one of the, there are three properties in Fall River County that we are looking to have them sell to satisfy the judgment that the City of Hot Springs has against Hot Springs citizens for progress. And those three properties are the empty lot that's on North River Street. Of course, the West Oak building is part of that, and there's some lots north of town. As those satisfy the judgment that we have to help us cover the costs of the previous demolition, I think that took place back in 2006 or something like that. And of course, our ideal thing, we would hope that someone would purchase the West Oak building with the idea to repair it and keep it as a, one of our distinctive standstones. And if that doesn't happen, hopefully, the City of Hot Springs, and that'd be up to the council to decide what is done with that building. I would hope that we could find a way at least to save that front facade and make it structurally sound so that even if someone would not take the building prior to road construction, we would be assured that that building would remain structurally sound. And of course, there's a neighboring building that's affected, and we want to make sure that that facility is also protected. With that summary, I would ask if Kara or Casey, if you have something that you would like to add.
7:10.
At a time, excuse me, the time is 7:10, and we'll get with you after the hearing is over. Apologize. And we do have a hearing. I'd like to open that hearing at 7:10. We do have a street water distribution system improvement district that's been amended. We'll be voting on that later. Since that distribution system improvement district was began, we added additional customer. We looped the lines. Able to provide, added fire protection with another hydrant, and that did, we did take into account the increased cost for the construction, which was a little bit more than what we had estimated. So at this time, I'd like to open the hearing. Are there any comments from the audience? Anyone that would like to make a statement? Go ahead, please come forward and state your name and...
Thank you, City Council, for hearing us today. My name is Duane Cruz. I'm one of the property owners up there on 26th Street, which this water distribution has affected. Over the course of the last couple of years, we have been discussing the improvement plan for getting the water distribution up there, creating a viable means to have housing built. And I feel that everything was done correctly, up until a part where there was a lack of transparency. Because of the increase in the cost, I believe that me, as well as other property owners, if they're not here, I would like to at least understand why, besides the cost of increase of labor or excavation. There was verbiage on that paragraph that said, "Not the fault of the city," that there was rock. And I have to disagree, because prior to that water line getting up there, there was rock. I know. I built my house on it. The State Home built their house on that rock. The gentleman behind me built that house on that rock. So it's not a mystery that there was rock up there. So all I ask is for clarification is to, if you engaged in running the water lines up there, that we should have had the estimates with rock included. And I'm sure it was, to a certain extent. But when the rock, when the water line got amended and we added an extra hydrant, I don't believe it was as clear and transparent than the additional labor costs. That's my opinion.
Well, let me clarify an answer for you.
Thank you, sir.
We started that project to assist people like you to get water to your home. And we were using a new technology that made it economically feasible. That is, by using a rock saw. That technology had not been used in Hot Springs or in the type of rock that we had. And we found that that rock saw took longer, required more blade replacement than what our engineer had estimated, because we had never done anything like that before. So there's no attempt to hide anything, and I resent that fact, that you're accusing the city of being not transparent. We were very open with our communications with you. Every opportunity and every question that you had, we went over backwards to ensure that you got the answers. So that's why that, that cost of engineering or the estimate increased during the actual construction. We found it was more costly than what we had anticipated, again, not having used that technology before. But the fact that we did use that technology, it did make it economically feasible. It would have been about twice as much to do that with a conventional jackhammer.
I understand, sir, and I don't want this to be emotional. All I'm asking is for transparency, and that you aren't providing, and I appreciate that. I don't have a problem with the money. I have a problem with not being told that my piece of the property has gone up over $4,000.
Duane? I do have some questions for you.
Oh. Yes, sir. Thought it was a question.
That's fine, and it's not sir. I've responded to a lot of other names, seldom sir. Pick one better, Bob, would be more appropriate. I just want to get an understanding. You just said that it's not so much the final cost that you're concerned with. If the final cost that you're looking at now was the original estimate, would that have changed your mind about wanting the water district put in at that time?
Not at all, sir, or Bob. I can tell you that, yes, water's up there's great, and for that, we're fairly grateful. And I'm sure the other property owners are, but there's a, there's a couple of other concerns, right, when it comes to money? And money is not to be emotional. And all I'm asking is that, I just received a letter saying the dollar amount's going up. What happened in between the $16,800 initial quote to the $23,000 quote I got, plus the interest and the taxes and everything else? It's been over a year, sir. Thank you. All right. Any more questions?
No.
Okay. All right.
Okay, we got about three minutes before we bump into another hearing. You were talking about the quantity of rock, and my understanding is anybody that's done any kind of construction around Hot Springs knows that you may run into rock. But I think the city wasn't aware that they were going to run into rock. The quantity, I believe, surprised everybody. The fact that we used the rock saw, we were hoping that we could get it done in a week because of the quantity, and we couldn't. The cost, as told to us by our engineer, our city engineer, is considerably less than we could try to do it any other way. But I understand what you're saying. You feel like through the whole process, you weren't informed of what was going on as much as you feel you should have. And we'll certainly take that forward and try to do better in the future. Apologize for you feeling necessary to share that with us. Until you folks tell us what we're doing wrong, we can't figure out what we need to do right. So thank you for sharing, and it's very good of us. I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Do you have any other comments? Thank you.
I'm kind of late to the game. New property owner, just down from those guys. And the same thing, I just wanted to see some more documentation on what money was spent, because the original estimate was for $12,000. I haven't seen anything that shows an increase until I got the letter in the mail saying that it was now $16,000 is what I went up to. And just some transparency on why the increase. But I'd like to see if I have a table that can tell me that information. I don't know if you guys are going to the file on it tonight or not.
We have those available at City Hall for review. The soft cost estimates that Tracy provided may be very helpful, and we do wish to send those out to all property owners. But if you'd like to stop by at City Hall, we'd be happy to provide those. It was discussed in public works committees and finance committees, but we didn't get a copy of it from the council.
Do you have any other comments? If not, are there any comments from the council? Hearing done. We'll go ahead and close the hearing. The time is 7:19. And rather than ask for you to talk for 30 seconds, we'll go ahead and wait and open our next hearing at 7:20. And our next hearing will deal with the vacation of section line right of way that's located in the Gold Springs addition. Do you have that information in your packages? I go ahead and... And the time is now 7:20. Like to go ahead and open that hearing. Are there any comments from the audience concerning the vacation of the, I see Mr. Ginsbaugh coming forward?
Hi, Pat Ginsbaugh, representing David Turnbull, Janelle Canute. They petitioned the City Council to vacate that section line between Section 12 and 13, the section line that divides the county from the city. And the reason for that was that the house that they had purchased, 2729 Jericho Road, was built by Jerry and Darlene Wright. When they bought the house, they apparently did not have the survey board, because that section line goes through the house. And the southern portion of the section line falls within the city. And so they petitioned the county to vacate that portion of the section line, board of the city limits. And then they petitioned the City Council to vacate that section line south into the city limits. We met with the planning commission, and they recommended a good pass of the fall resolution, so we just had to take that action. At the county commission meeting last Tuesday, they approved the resolution, vacating that part of the section, and it falls within the county. Any questions?
Okay. Do you have any questions for Mr. Ginsbaugh? Okay, hearing done. Are there any comments from the council? Hearing done. Now we'll go ahead and close the hearing at 7:21. And we do have time for communications from the public. Kara?
Kara, 549 Holbrook Avenue. And we're here to like to talk about the West Oak building. We wouldn't be here if it wasn't for Deanna Donnell. Way back, she started a group called the SOS. They were concerned citizens who wanted to save the sandstone in Hot Springs. And now this group that we're starting, we're reviving the SOS, because we want to preserve our future. And, you know, we've put a lot, when we did the Black Hills State University study years ago, we talked about what are the, what is Hot Springs about? It's about the history of housing buildings. It's about the sandstone buildings. And it's about the unique layout we have in our world. And the value of the sandstone buildings is of the utmost importance. And I want to thank Mary Cotty for meeting with me, and I want to thank John for meeting with everyone else. And I want to thank Bob for asking us to give you the chance, because we want to do that. We want to work with the council of the city to come to some type of resolution. What have we missed? What can we do? And, you know, there's a quote that I like, it's called, it says, "It's always, it always seems impossible until it is done." I have a list of over 60 businesses, storefronts, new windows, new improvements, new, new, redone, rehabbed, restored, over 60. And that was just what I could think of in the last few years off the top of my head. I'm sure there's many, many more. It's a full page. I'm not going to list them all. Because I'll take too much time. But I want to say that we've done so much, you know? They say it's impossible, but it's not. There's so many things that people say are impossible, that they're not. I mean, I have proof of that. You have Hot Springs and Hot Springs again. I've been working my tail off, and I've been told so many times, you can't do this, you can't do that. And that's just not true. There's a way. There's always a way. Hot Springs is a destination because of its sustainability, because of its history, because of its architecture, because of its character. That's why businesses come here. That's why they want a base here. That's part of the draw. I would hate for it to become what the hometown is. Mitchell, South Dakota, it's a great town. But every time I go home, reappearing again and again holes in Main Street is so bad. They put $6 million into Quonlet Palace, but they're not putting money into research programs helping, you know, the business owners, building owners, find a way to restore these buildings. There are grants out there, there's money out there, there's people that want to buy these buildings right now. The West Oak in particular. And I really hope that you guys can work together to try and help find a way to assist them, to find the money. And we're asking for a cost comparison, demolition versus stabilization. It looks like you've already done, so we're already working together. See, we're already on the right track. So Casey's going to talk a little bit more about the intentions of just our group, Save Our Sandstone, to preserve our future, and what our ideas and thoughts are. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you, Kara.
Hello, Casey Carruthers. One, can you use a phone?
Can you stand just a little bit closer? That mic doesn't pick up very well. I think I want to hear what you're saying.
And so did you get the address?
Yeah.
Kara said a great deal of what I would say. First of all, thank you very much for the intention you brought to it. Clearly, you have researched and done it. I'm, as a member of this community, concerned that last time seemed confrontational, and I don't think that was really the intention of anyone having sat with this group. We're passionate. We think the buildings are important, and it was, it was shocking to suddenly see cones around a building, and here it's going to be condemned. Having read the structural report, and I have a lot of experience in construction and in historic preservation, and it's, it's a challenge. It's a big one. I absolutely respect what you all are dealing with in trying to make this decision and maintain the safety of the citizens and deal with the building within really questionable shape. That said, the Albertson Report is an opinion and a report. It's not an analysis. And what I've been reading, a lot of documentation from national conservation groups on stone buildings and the rest, what's required is a structural analysis. Because what in a timber frame building would constitute about to fall down doesn't play the same in a stone building. And Mike Albertson's experience is only what his experience is. So what we are hoping is that we can find someone who has the experience to come and take a look at the building before the final decision is made. And just how that goes about, we would love to work with you, find who a person who has experience in stone buildings might be to come and give that information, because it's not always simple. And the demolition of this building, I don't think is that simple either, because of the connection to the one next to it and the other. I mean, it's not just knock it down. It's not that simple. So once you start getting down a complicated road, perhaps, perhaps there's something we don't know. And like Kara said, it's impossible until, until you know. I mean, I, I don't, I can't read that report and go, yeah, this is what you do, but I haven't done it before. I've done a lot, but I haven't done that. And I know there are people who do. So that's what Save Our Sandstone is, is hoping that, you know, we don't want to be in any way make you feel that somehow you, you know, aren't doing your due diligence. I think the bigger question is, how did we get to this place? What do we do so we don't have another one sometime later? And that's a conversation to have someplace else. How do we keep that integrity of our heritage? And, I mean, we've been given this by our ancestors, here, these wonderful things. How are we going to protect them? And it's a conversation. So thank you very much. If we can help this one.
Okay, thank you, Casey. And we'll, we'll certainly, you know, keep working at, I think the, the critical thing, at least from my engineering background and education, is that center roof being, and that's the, that's pretty unknown, because timber construction in itself is, is not as predictable as more building materials such as steel or concrete. And we complicate that by it being rotten. We just don't know unless somebody goes and checks the amount of good wood there is in there, and they can make an analysis, and that probably would be a little bit too dangerous. So we'll, we'll continue to, to work on it. We, our goal is to save the building. I think that first and foremost, obviously, we have to be concerned about safety, as you mentioned. If you can work and help encourage someone to invest in that... If you can work and help encourage someone to invest in that, and that would be, you know, the ideal solution. That we would get somebody that's interested to locate and start another business here in Hot Springs in one of our sandstones, that would be great.
If I could ask, so if the legal ownership of that building, if you demo it, then the city owns it, all of it, the land, everything? Or...
No, that's what we're working through with the execution of judgment. That we tore down a building, another building on River Street, and we ended up tearing it down and not getting paid to be at. And that's what we're trying to collect money for that. And also, so that's why we're hoping that someone will buy that at a sheriff's auction. It would be our ideal choice. And I'm sorry, the time is 7:30, so I would like to go ahead and open our next hearing.
Mayor Kody?
Yes.
If I could, after our next two voting hearings, I'd like an opportunity to come back and talk with Kara and Casey. I do have some questions for them. Thank you.
Okay, we do have a hearing. This one is concerns of use permit on review for Michelle Erickson to operate a home daycare. And that's at 1446 Clark Alley in Hot Springs. Are there any comments either for or against authorizing this permit on review? Is Michelle here? Okay.
Hi. I'm not familiar with this process, so what do I need to do?
Well, okay, we'd just like to... The council will be voting later to approve or disapprove your use permit. We'd like to understand what you're trying to do and why you think it's important and why you think that should be approved.
Well, I guess... Well, my name is Michelle Erickson and I live at 1446 Clark Alley. I guess I... My plan is to open in-home daycare. My husband works for the railroad, so I just kind of would like something to fill my time. My plan is to run regular business hours. And I've been told that daycare is in high demand here, so... And I ran a daycare for three years before I moved here, so, yeah.
Okay. Are you licensed by the state to do this?
No, I am not.
Okay. Do you intend to get a license from the state?
Not at this time.
Okay. And could I ask why?
I don't know. I guess I'm just not, I don't know, interested in taking it that far.
Okay, there's certain requirements that those licenses, you know, ensure that people that reuse your facilities, you know, are protected and that you meet certain requirements. And we just... I'm just curious as to...
I guess when I called and talked to Scott, he said it wasn't a requirement for an in-home daycare.
Yeah, and we understand that.
Yep. So at this time, I'm not looking to do that. Maybe in the future, but not at this time.
And how many children are you looking to take in, at what ages?
Um, I'm... You know, when I did daycare in Aberdeen, it was 12. The city required, you know, you can only take in 12 kids. So most likely, you know, 10 to 12.
Okay. And do you have the facilities to...
I do, yep. Yep, and as far as I know, you know, when I did daycare in Aberdeen, it was you could have four kids under the age of two, and only two of those could be infants. And the rest was, you know, older. So that's my plan.
Okay.
You said your hours are going to be standard hours, have to be?
Um, you know, 7:15, 7:30 to about 5:30.
Okay. Have you talked to your neighbors?
I have, yep. They've all gotten their notice about it.
Have you got a response from them personally?
Um, my next-door neighbor, she was happy about it. She was ecstatic. She was supporting me, so, yeah.
Do there any other questions from the council? Any comments from the audience?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
The only problem I have, I'm tickled to death to do this, I think it's a great thing, but it's an alley going through a house. It's a one-lane alley, so traffic. If two cars meet, one's going to have a big back clear alley.
I guess we deal with that on a daily basis. The house not too far from us is doing construction.
You're talking 10 to 12 families.
No, no, you wouldn't have that many families. You would probably have maybe three families.
Well, you're talking 10 to 12 kids.
Yeah, but they're not driving.
Okay, go ahead. Please, can you just talk into the mic?
Their parents are going to be driving.
Ross Erickson, I'm Michelle's husband. Same address. Uh, yeah, I understand what you're saying. That's our only...
Yeah, I know that.
Yep, so that is definitely an issue. And I've thought about that as well as the condition of the alley because it's not maintained very well at all.
It's got millings on it, black millings.
Yeah, and it's so sloped where you come down into our property, the rock that the city uses and puts down is so fine that it washes down into our ditch. So I've actually personally bought several truckloads of rock and dumped it in the alley to help maintain it. So that's a concern of mine, and I encourage the city to step up and maybe put bigger rock in there, too, to protect it. The other issue, there's... Someone else is moving in, so there's three houses that use that alley for access. I've met people. It's... You can get by each other as well as there's a couple driveways that you just pull off into the side. So I understand what you're saying, and that is an issue, but it is doable. Yep, I've done it several times. But since I've lived there, we've lived there for a year, I've passed, I've met three cars in there. So it doesn't happen a lot, but obviously with more traffic it is. And that's an issue, but unfortunately, where we live, that's our one-way in, one-way out, so, yeah.
So there's three other homes that use the same access?
Yes. They have driveways or garages. Well, four technically, but one's unoccupied now. But so there are a few houses that use that alley, but as I said, it's personally, I've never had an issue getting by anyone in there. And if you got to back up a little bit, pull off to the side, it is what it is, though. I didn't make the road.
No, I understand.
No, and I'm not, I'm not.
And you made the statement, you've lived there for a year now.
Correct.
That's correct. Going through this process with other home businesses and so on and so forth, it would really be nice, means you've only been there a year, if... Especially means you've been there a year. If we can get a written comment from your neighbors.
As far as what?
As far as what their position is, as far as you starting a home business.
Can I answer that? We have to send certified letters to all of our neighbors.
Asking for that.
Asking, that letting them know that they could come here and voice any concerns they have. I don't know if there's anyone here or not. So we've done everything obligated by the city to notify our neighbors and let them know that if there are any issues, that this is the time and place to come and voice those concerns.
And you have not gotten any response?
Yep. The one neighbor that we talked to first, well, we talked to one neighbor and she's really happy about it.
Is she going to be a client?
No, she's 83 years old, so, I don't know, yeah.
I don't want you to feel that I'm on a roadblock.
No, I don't do that either.
Because I'm very supportive for this, okay? There is a need for daycare. But also, at the same time, you've dealt with other businesses that the access in and out to their homes was impacted by traffic and it became a problem later on. That's the only reason I'm asking. If some of them would even scratch something on a piece of paper saying they support you, it just means when we go to make a decision, that it's taking everybody's input into question with the answer.
Let me just ask, are there any of the neighbors here tonight to make a comment at the hearing?
Bob Paul, I live on Schofield Street. I did not receive a letter, but I am not an immediate neighbor to Ross and Michelle. I've got a neighboring property in between the two of us. I applaud them for their effort in wanting to do a daycare. I think it's a very needed, necessary thing for the city. I do have concerns, though, on the traffic on the alley. I've lived in this property for 20 years now. I know that there's not a great deal of traffic that goes up and down Clark Alley, but I know that that alley is not... As Ross said, it's not a highly maintained alley. It does have millings down on it. There's not a lot of traffic on it that I see, but I am a little concerned with the addition of extra cars and what that would impact both on your business and on the alley. That will be my only concern.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you. Are there any other comments?
I have one question. Michelle, and I think I know the answer to this, but I just want to... I want to ask it just for clarity. This, your business, you intend it just to be for a private business? You have no intention of bringing in children from the state or...
Not at this time.
Okay, so you would not fall under South Dakota codified law 26-6-27?
I don't know what you're talking about.
That's where you would hold foster children or children that would be paid for by the state? Therefore, that would take you out from under that law?
Yep.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments?
I would just like to say that I think it's awesome. We have a need, I'm glad you're filling it. And I think if any neighbors had any comment, they should have came. Thank you.
I have a question, but because we're bumping up against another public hearing, I'll save my questions for those who actually are voting on the agenda. The folks could hang around, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other comments that you have?
I'll just say one thing. It's not that we're opposed to getting state certified down the road, it's just to get the process started. As she said, I work for the railroad, and I never know if I have a job or not. And as of today, I don't. So that's why we're starting in this regard, to get the ball going. We can take in some kids, get some income going, because like I said, right now I don't have a job. So it's not that we're opposed to it, it's just at this time, we just want to get it going, get it opened up, and then we can address that down the road. And like I said, as far as the road goes, you know, I look forward to working with the city. I think it needs to be maintained anyway better, even if we didn't have a daycare. Obviously, that daycare is going to add some strain on that road, but I don't think that... I think it does need to be maintained better than we can.
Okay. And Bob, that's something that we might want to look at as adding, if there's a way that we can do that through public works, just if there's something that we can do.
And as I said, it's just simply the way of the slope of the road, and I'm a layman. It's just, it's so fine that it runs right down, and so you're essentially spending money for a very short-term pack that you're just, you're wasting money essentially.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
If there's no other comments, that closes this hearing. The time is 7:43. I'd like to move into the final hearing that we have for the evening. And that's another use permit on review for quality real estate to operate an RV park and campground. That's on the US Highway 18 bypass here in Hot Springs. And I believe the Wilsons are here to give us an idea of what your plans are. I know that you will be leasing that land and developing that RV park. We're excited to hear your plans.
Todd Wilson, 806 Gallaston.
Could you get closer to the mic, please?
Yeah, 806 Gallaston. Been working on this RV park for about a year now. Working with Steve on the land, acquiring it, getting a lease on the property now that we can move forward with the front procurement. And then since we had to get the use of review, we waited to get all that put together. Spent a lot of time with the city, making sure we cross over our keys, dotted our eyes, regarding layout, pubbing in, coming out, contacting the state highway department for, you know, getting on and off the highway. We'd like to make it into a world-class facility with paved sites eventually, give people a place to stay in the city. We traveled nationwide and in and out of a lot of RV parks, hundreds. And when we first settled here, we still had our fifth wheel, and there's nowhere to stay. We had to stay clear of the Hermosa, which is the only place that's open around. And then it's a long way to drive back and forth, and there's still nowhere to go. So that's what kind of got us thinking that the area needed one. It'd be a great thing to keep the people here in the city. Golf course nearby, we'd love to try to go out to the snowbird crowd, and help the golf course, restaurants, and then just move forward with it as it grows.
Have you done any market research to see what kind of clientele you could attract here in Hot Springs?
Yeah, we've talked with the Black Hills Tourism Board considerably, and Lakes, I guess it would be, Black Hills and Lakes and tourism. They feel there's a really high need in this area. I've talked to the Chamber considerably, and they get many calls. And they have turned people away. There's nowhere to go, basically. They got, you know, K.O.A., where their danger's a great part, but with the trees being tied, the newer, modern trailers and motorhomes can't fit in there without damage. They're just really tight. So they're sending people up to Costa or, you know, on down the highway, so they just can't stay here. There's just no offerings nearby that have full hookups or equipment, they were extended. Full power, water, Wi-Fi, where they can stay in vacation for a week.
And what facilities do you plan to include in the RV park?
We intend to have full hookup with sewer, city water, and internet services, TV. We're going to have a swimming pool coming into a later phase, about a year out, pavilion for family gatherings, more golf cart rentals. We'll have the pool, we'll have everything offered, little grocery store built into the office. RV wash available if they want it. Do it right.
So you've obviously experienced and know what caters to the RV folks?
Correct. Been a lot of time, it's like four years we've moved every two days a different park. Seattle, South Carolina, Florida.
And who's going to do your electrical?
We'll let her do it.
You plan on having meal save, a lot of them, I travel a lot of this stuff. You intend to have meal save on Friday night, Saturday night, Sunday, offering breakfast? You know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, no, I considered that. I think what I'd like to do is possibly bring, I know that they have some food trucks up in Rapid. Start off by having somebody like that come in, cater it, see if there's a market for it, before making the investment to, you know, when we put our final building up down in the lower portion where the bathhouse and the pool will be, I think that'd be the ideal place for it essentially located, to have that where people aren't having to be put back at the top of the park. And get some good feedback. Oh, I think that'd be something very favorable, you know, Saturday mornings, pay cake, provide breakfast in there.
Do you have a perspective designed for the area?
Yes.
Yes, and he has turned that into, they've got a coordinator, Scott, and the planning zoning commission.
Planning and zoning, so it was a very detailed, good plan, so thank you. That was very clear of what their vision was and gave everything that Scott had asked for.
If we're going to vote on something like that, it'd be nice to provide that to everybody so they kind of have an idea of what they're voting for. How many units total do you plan on?
I plan campsites and RV sites, we're roughly eight. Use some cabins in there. I'd like to add some TVs later for people to stay at, just, you know, if they don't want to... They still want the tent, but they don't want a pitch tip, you know? A little more primitive, and then...
So how many stages in your development are you expecting to go through?
We're expecting three stages, we've got the initial stage, we start off this year with roughly 20 sites and break ground on the building along the highway, and have it completed by fall, early winter next year. the building along the highway, and have it completed by fall, early winter next year. And then next year, open up the second half of the sites down below, and get the bath house opened up on that, and the following year, bring in some paved sites and start to put all the final touches on it, and just work it forward, reinvest anything that makes right back into the property, make it what it needs to be to be successful.
And I do remind the council, we're not approving their plan, we're approving their use, to use that as a, as an RV campground. The planning and zoning commission did have two options to recommend, either go with plant unit development, which would have required them to come with a plan, which they did have, but they felt it better qualified under a permit on, on review. Am I stating that right, Allison?
Yes, yes, it became clear that a campground would follow it under the use permit on review, saving them a ton of time and effort, though.
The building you said is going to be owned by the bypass?
Yes.
Is that Rusty Nelson's old place? Where the kind of concrete garage is in the flat road?
No, no, that's east of where the Forest Service building is. I don't want to work, that'd be highway construction there across from there. Our intent's to have that building follow the similar architectural style of Forest Service building. So that way, everything complements each other, it looks quality, you know, I don't want it to be anything but that.
Okay. Are there any comments or questions from the audience? Since this is a public hearing?
Just one question, I was just getting here, I got kind of a frog. Have they determined that the water and sewer service is over there, are they just supporting something like that?
So they are absolutely.
So we're not really...
We've met with everybody.
For the bottom line.
We've met with everybody, we had a 12-inch sewer being right up in the middle of the park. And we have multiple locations that have two or three.
And did you have neighbors you needed to send letters to?
We did.
And, okay, it just wasn't part of our package, so you did go ahead and do that?
Yes, we did.
Okay.
And I tracked them all before I came, trying to make sure that they've all delivered, and they did.
They were delivered, okay.
Okay, are there any other comments or questions from the audience or from the council?
There's an audience member.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I'd like to see the plan, because that's right down from where we live. And I've heard about it, but if you're asking us if we're okay with it, I don't know until I see something. You know, see where it is concerning where we live, and because that's, that's my husband. He was trying to persuade it to me, and I'm going, "Where?" And he said, "Without a map, I can't tell you." So how do we, do I come to the office?
I think that the requirement is that people within, that those are the people that can comment, and you can come see it, I believe, it's on record at City Hall, but to give comments on whether or not it should be approved or not, is the council decision, and then the neighbors within 200 feet of the property.
I personally mapped out the 200 feet, so...
It's essentially not visible from where we are.
No, but it's just down, down from us, and so, and you were asking that?
It's, just for a point of reference, Jane, it's just up from the state USA, and in that, that area there, and the frontage would be along the highway between USA and the Forest Service building.
Right. And this is down from us, so I just, so to come to the office, that's where you're staying?
Scott has them available.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure. Are there any other comments?
I have a question, too. First one, I feel obligated to ask, and I'm certainly not comparing you to the large brush pile that the city will be discussing later.
Yes, this was discussed in planning.
Brush piles and all those kinds of things, now when you're talking about 80 units, and all that, we're really dealing with smoke in that valley, so your plans, do you see, are you sending smoke signals between each campsite?
No, I thought about that, considered that. Scott and I had a conversation about it, and he said, "Have you considered it?" I have. I think the best way to mediate that would be, you know, have a 50% ratio of sites that have a fire. And then the fire rings would be, you know, an optimal diameter section. So then that way, that keeps the fire size small.
Well, down, screens open? Will there be screens provided for?
Yes. Yeah, grid and grid, like steel grid. Obviously, provided by the good flag warnings and any, you know, fire vans, you know, it's applicable. But I think that'd be the way to limit, you know, as you probably know, convenient a lot of the campgrounds that...
A lot of them don't have it.
A lot do, a lot don't, and a lot of people have them and don't use them.
Right.
You know, so it's kind of a, it's a real hit and miss thing sometimes.
It would be hard to gauge.
It would be difficult, but I think if we limited to half the sites that have them, these would be proactive and recognize that there could be a potential issue.
Something along those lines, because it is a use permit on review. I hope you can have them, I think most everybody likes the smell of burning pine, really adds to the camping experience. But if it turned out that it just wasn't working, you're open to, you know, prohibiting it, and do you feel it would, you know, impact, you know, the campers that would be there? Is that something important to them?
I don't think it would, of course it would impact the service net, but given that you're having the only facility around, you're kind of a shank hole that if you don't have a fire pit, you don't have them. If it's a problem, they don't have them. It's not often, no, it's not often.
There's a lot of places also that don't have pits at the site, but they have a larger pit area that's actually operated by a manager or whatnot, but it's essentially a gathering area for them, so if something was to come up, we could always limit it something like that.
We do intend to have a pavilion, like you say, that's going to be covered with gathering and support shit pits and stuff like that, where that might suit, something like that, if it arrives.
Okay.
And if they had campfires in the summer and early fall, it probably wouldn't stay in the valley anyway, because at night it'd go higher.
Again, I feel obligated to talk about it because all the points you're making now could certainly be made for the current agenda, I have them in front of us.
And if we do burn the brush pile, we could always blame it on that. It's a fire, it's cool.
Maybe we could provide it with fire.
And then my, my second question for you, when you were talking about sewer and water, do you envision any cost to the city for sewer and water, or are you picking up all those costs, are you picking up all the costs?
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay. Any other questions?
Just a point of clarification. So right now, it's in quality real estate, and I assume before you start building, it's going to have a title change, or?
That is in the area, still. One of the reasons why we have to pursue the full purchase was, if this didn't go through with this use, I don't know what I would do with that plan.
Right, right, exactly.
You know? So, once it does go through, Steve's been, you know, very gracious in working with us, keeping it rolling, and talked to him pretty frequently about, you know, there would be rocks and a lot of dirt work, and so, he's going to be very active in that.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments? If not, we'll go ahead and close the hearing. The time is 7:59. And again, thank you, we'll be considering that later on the agenda, I appreciate you staying around for that. Okay, moving on, and our agenda, we do have on the agenda, Shedco update, is Andrea here? Okay, I don't see her in the audience anywhere. We'll move on to personnel actions, I'd accept...
Mayor Cotty?
Yes.
I asked if we could revisit questions for Karen Casey after we were done with the public hearings.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, just go.
That's fine, thank you. Let me get back to my train of thought here. You had mentioned that the council had asked for an opportunity to give us a chance to work this over. And what I had mentioned at that night was because it kind of did feel like, you know, the full responsibility was on our shoulders. So the "we" I think needs to be council and community, council and private, not just what solution are we going to come up with? So, these questions aren't intended as obstacles that you need to overcome, I just want to understand what you folks are thinking of. Do you see this, in everything, it's the finances. If you've got enough money, you can fix anything. But do you see this as a financial burden only to the city to take care of? Or do you see the financial burden more being private, purchasing the property, fixing up the property, with the city working, you know, to, to put things in place to make that work? I'm trying to understand how you folks see that.
You know, that's part of the difficulty, is the ownership of the building, and who can, and who owns it, and who, right? I can't go buy it, if I think of, you know, a person can't at the moment. There's not, it's not for sale, it's not, and that's why I was trying to understand what happens with demolition, and who ends up owning it, and what that process or procedure could be. What, what I think the group wanted to understand was, if, if the city had said, "Look, we know demolition is going to cost X amount," and if there is a private group that would like to step up, "We would take that demolition money that we know we're going to have to spend, because we know we're going to have to demo it, and we'll work with that group toward finding a different path." I mean, there's just, I think, I think we can't have that conversation until we can understand who can own it and how it could proceed. And I think, you know, we've talked about different possibilities, but it all hinges on, does the city own it? And that's why I was asking, that, you know, if you, if you obtain it to demo it, then there's land and potentially a facade, who owns that now? Who gets to sell that? So, yeah, we might come up with a lot of solutions. There is money, there are people who will support preserving a building. You're not going to get grants to demo it in the same way that you can get grants from the state and the national preservation for preserving it. So I think that's part of why we wanted to be sure there aren't options. Saving the facade is certainly a good way to think about it. And I don't know, a point of clarification, you said that the bid that you have is $2,000 to demo it?
No.
No?
The plan, the engineering plan.
Gotcha. Yeah, okay. So it's going to be pricey, this is a complicated, horrible mess, that would be, I mean, I, I got that, so...
So as a collective group, are you thinking of donating money towards repairing the building as it stands?
No.
Back to a useful building, and then providing labors? What, I mean, what are you looking at? Are you looking at money? Are you looking at products? Are you looking at labor? Your donation, you know, I'm just trying to get a feel of what you're thinking.
We are a multifaceted group, different people have different ideas. We haven't crystallized, again, because it's not a plan, because we don't even know what we could do, but the kinds of things that we can offer are, one, one idea that was talked about was, in Minnesota, there is a cooperative group that formed to buy buildings and renovate them. And the whole process, it's a group that's willing to give us information. I know some of our folks are looking into that right now, how we might do it. So I think we would be open to buying the building, doing something on it, perhaps. I mean, it's all, you know, it's different. Is it $10,000? Is it $100,000? Is it $1 million? We have to put up a $1 million insurance policy, you know, you're going to price us out if we can find some, and again, if you're going to talk to us, so many different possibilities in construction, much like we were hearing earlier, too, you don't know in construction. You don't know if that beam that's deflected that's bad, when you start to mess with it, you don't know what's going to happen. You don't know what the effect on the other building is, and so it's harder to make a plan. And we're just really have contention to...
We're not going to, go ahead.
And, yeah, no, and way too detailed to continue on, I think, in the meeting, but can I make two statements, and they're probably overly obvious, but just to add into your, all the 10,000 other things you have to think about is, one is certainly the issue of time because of the road construction, and I know you've already, you know, that's the, one of the, that brought the issue to the forefront, and that is certainly a consideration. So as a councilman, I lay that out on the table, and you already know about that. The other thing, I want to take my councilman hat off, and you've probably already thought about it, but I spent 35 years as a safety professional. My, when I look at that building, one of my concerns is if you, when, assuming you can work on it, the safety of the people that have to go in there and start taking the bits and pieces out, that is going to take so much planning, that is going to impact your budget, that's going to impact your timeline. So just in case you were running out of things to think about, there's a couple more, so thank you for listening.
Oh, I would say, demo has the same issues, that building won't come down easily.
And we're not going to be able to, to solve this tonight, we've got a big agenda. I would ask, again, that this goes, it is being on the agenda at the Public Works Committee, where we can discuss it in a lot more detail. We just don't have enough information to, with, you know, what's going to happen as far as the execution of the judgment. But we certainly appreciate the interest and the help and the positive comments of, of wanting to, to be of assistance and work, and we certainly want to work together to make sure the best outcome comes.
And respecting that the mayor is trying to move us along, I need to ask, does your group acknowledge that this can can be kicked down the road anymore? That every time someone asks to save our sandstone, and I agree 100%, we only have so many buildings, every time we lose one, at some point, they're going to be extinct if we allow that to continue. I acknowledge that. But with this particular building, we can't kick it down the road anymore. We have a two-year window, and it's even less than that, plans have to be in place. Does your group understand that?
Yeah, of course. And it's not just the West Side.
And it wasn't an accusation, I just...
It wasn't just, it's not just the West Side building, too. We have other buildings that I think you guys feel are a concern, too. So I've asked, to answer your question as well, Mayor Cotty, to take into consideration a couple of people I've recommended, is Casey, from what is Everlawn to Johnson, for the Historic Preservation Commission. And, you know, through that commission, I feel like maybe we could do a little more research with the state, there's a little teeth for our ordinances through the state, where if people do neglect these properties, maybe it doesn't go on so long in the future. Maybe we can say, there is even a line item in there where it says, and I don't have my papers with me, that if, there could be jail time, there's actually monetary penalty, that kind of thing, so maybe we can, you know, not let it get so grossly neglected.
Yes, we are looking into that, Karen.
And it's just, it's just, you know, like it was before, save our sandstone, preserve our future, let's get involved, this is a way for people to, like, get involved, building owners, sandstone owners, you know, to make a difference. And, you know, maybe it's coming to more of the planning and zoning unions, and we certainly want to finally work with you. My thoughts, from a safety issue, that I wanted to kind of mention briefly, though this, so if we do take the building down, for example, it's attached to Steve Williams' building, what is the process of that, Mrs. Ed? I would like the engineer to consider.
Yeah, and again, I... Yeah, and again, Karen, we're not going to be able to solve that tonight. I would ask that you bring, we have these detailed discussions at the Public Works Committee.
I will get something ready. I will be there with something ready to consider.
And again, thank you so much for being here and...
Thank you.
We hope to get this thing safe. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on in our agenda, we've got personnel actions A through D. I'd ask approval.
Make a motion to approve personnel actions A through D.
Second.
They've moved and seconded to approve personnel actions. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We've got our committee reports administrative and finance, Bob and Caitlin.
Next event in finance meeting will be February 10th, 1:00 in City Hall, Public's Hall.
Airport Advisory Committee, Bill.
Airport Advisory Committee met on Thursday, January 30th, 8:00 a.m. at the airport. Present from the committee were Don Connor, Georgia Holmes, John Henderson, John Nash, Shane Miller, Larry Vedderman as chair. From the city was Ed Jensen, Tracy Bastian, Scott Sohie, John Gregory, the mayor and myself. There was no old business under new business. Ed introduced Rob Hagan, who is leasing a space in the old hangar and operating an airplane maintenance business. Rob is a resident of Hot Springs and we welcome him to the community and to the airport. Discussions will continue to determine if there is space in the new heated hangar for his operations. This is a preferred location, not only because it's heated, because it has higher doors and that allows for unobstructed access to larger aircraft for maintenance. Also, as part of the discussion, Scott provided some cost estimates to upgrade the old hangar with a ceiling and insulation in the area used for maintenance. Also, as with all city fees, the new hangar rental rates went into place on January 1st. Tracy provided an update on information regarding the grazing lease. Based on the condition of the fence and the pasture, it appears that the best option is to work to improve the quality of the pasture so it can be grazed and not to utilize the area for cattle storage and feeding. No decision or recommendation was made at this time. Ed has applied for an FAA design grant for ramp extension and 10-unit T-hanger. This is a 90% grant and would require about $8,500 from the city if awarded and would likely be part of our 2021 budget. The Forest Service representative that will present the drone information meeting will be sometime after February 18th as that representative is currently in Australia assisting with their wildland fire emergencies. Ed has been approached by a group of, a group interested in constructing private hangars on the airport. There is space available to do this. If successful, that land would be leased to them as it is with current individuals with privately owned hangars. Ed is continuing to update the information on his job description and daily duties and tasks as he looks forward to his November retirement date. The airport will be posting for summer help for mowing. This position will be for 16 hours a week and will run from May 1st to September 1st. A review of regional general aviation fuel costs show that within South Dakota's Hot Springs is still very competitive. The lower fuel cost is available in Rushville, Gordon, and Valentine, Nebraska. The committee discussed the QT pod, which is the credit card reader for the fuel sales. That equipment will not be supported after mid-2020. A motion was made to make a recommendation that the QT pod be replaced now while there's still some trade-in value. And the committee requested that I communicate that recommendation to Admin Finance Committee, which I will do next time we meet. There was initial discussion regarding the family fly-in fun day. That event typically takes place on the first Saturday of June, which will be June 6th of this year. In January, there were 72 flight operations and we sold 399 gallons of aviation fuel. And as a little bit of a summary for 2019, we brought in $26,581 on hangar rentals. We sold $580.38 of oil. Brought in $245 of rental on the courtesy car. And sold $29,287.17 worth of aviation fuel between July 1st and the 31st of December. Our meeting adjourned at 10:00 a.m. and we will meet again on Thursday, February 27th at the airport.
Okay, thank you. Custer, Fall River, Wills Management District, Ron.
Next meeting will be second Thursday in March at 7:00 p.m. I apologize for not having a date again here at the North Center.
Downtown Historic Preservation Commission, Craig.
Next meeting is this Wednesday, the 5th, 5:00 o'clock at the library.
Evans Plunge Advisory Committee, Allison.
We will be meeting February 13th at noon at the plunge.
Parks Recreation, Beautification, and Culture Development, Dave.
Wednesday, our next meeting is Wednesday, February 5th, this coming Wednesday at 1:00 p.m. here at the Miller Center. After our regular meeting, we'll be meeting to talk about the possibility of the dog park here now.
Great. Planning and zoning commission, Allison.
Next planning and zoning is February 19th at 6:00 p.m. at City Hall.
Thank you. Public Safety, Bill.
Next public safety meeting is Wednesday, the 19th at 1:00 p.m. at City Hall.
Public Works.
Public Works met on January 28th at City Hall. Mayor Cotty, Craig, Bill, Allison, John, Tracy, Scott, Billy Morrow, and myself are present. Old business items, our brush piles. The committee had a spirited debate about the current and future management of the brush tree pile with the landfill. Main topics discussed were chipping the piles and burning the piles. The previous two times the piles were addressed, the city used commercial chipping of the piles to dispose of the waste. About three to four years ago, the city spent $25,000 to chip the piles and the contractor only chipped about one-third of the pile. The last time the pile was shredded, the cost to the city was $63,500. Neither of these costs are amounts the city can sustain going forward. Future chipping of future piles, that makes sense, future chipping of future piles, was discussed with city-owned equipment and then combined the chips with compost and salted waste from the wastewater treatment plant to produce a topsoil. The topsoil can be used to increase the ground cover of existing waste cells of the landfill and also possibly be used at other locations throughout the city. Burning of the existing piles was once again discussed. The advantage of burning the piles is the low cost to the city. The disadvantage is the potential for accumulation of smoke from the burning piles. If done properly and under the right weather conditions, accumulation of smoke should be reduced. We can guarantee that. We would strive to do the best we can, but there's no guarantee. If the council approves the burning of the pile, procedures will need to be in place to ensure specific steps are implemented before the pile is ignited. And Mayor Cotty has already put together a list of steps that he feels the city needs to take. John has contacted South Dakota DENR and received a favorable response telling the city we have permission from the state to burn a pile. Public Works Committee recommends a one-time burn of the existing pile and pursue chipping of future piles and combine the chips with compost and salted waste to create an environmentally friendly product going forward. We also talked about the West Oak building. The city has received a report from the Albertson Engineering regarding the West Oak building. And the report is available for public review in the city administrator's office. And thank you, Mayor Cotty, for making that happen. The city will continue to gather further information for the council's review, development forum view, and the public regarding future decisions related to the West Oak building. Those were the only two topics that we discussed, but it took up the majority of two and a half hours, close to three hours to get that taped here. Did I miss anything for the folks over there?
Thanks, Ron.
All right. The next Public Works meeting will be February 11th, 1:00 in City Hall, Public's Hall.
Thank you, Bob. Good summary. Southern Hills Economic Development, Caitlin.
We've switched our meetings to quarterly and we have not yet scheduled the next one.
Okay, thank you. And there's no, nothing to report from the Gulf Advisory Committee? Volunteer Fire Department, Ron.
Next meeting will be the second Tuesday of March, 7:00 p.m. Again, I apologize for not having a date.
Okay, thank you. We move on in our agenda to resolutions. Our first resolution is Resolution 2020-5, a resolution approving the special assessment role for the 26th Street Water Improvement District. We've had the hearing previous. I'd ask for a motion to approve the amended special assessment.
I'll make a motion to approve the requested tax abatements as presented and submitted by the County of Fall River. Well, I'm not reading right.
Okay, 2020-5.
I make a motion to approve Resolution 2020-5, a resolution approving an amended special assessment role for the 26th Street Water Improvement District.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve that amended assessment role. Are there any, is there any discussion, questions, or comments?
Can you clarify the term, please?
Or a term of 10 years. Thank you, Misty.
Okay, are there any, any discussion? Okay, we've had the hearing. I'd go ahead and take a roll call, vote, Misty, if you call the roll, please.
David Burris?
Yes.
Bill Lukens?
Yes.
Bob Nelson?
Yes.
Ron Richards?
Yes.
Allison Ritterbusch?
Yes.
Craig Romi?
Yes.
Caitlin Turner?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, the motion is approved. The next resolution is 2020-6. That's the resolution to vacate the section line in the Cold Springs addition, Turnbull and Coos property line there. We heard the explanation during the public hearing from Mr. Ginsbaugh. As the county has already looked at their portion of vacating that line and has voted to approve that. I would accept a motion to vacate that section line.
I make a motion to approve Resolution 2020-6, resolution to vacate section line in Cold Springs addition, Turnbull and Coos.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to vacate that section line. Are there any further comments, questions, or discussion? Hearing done, that's Misty, if you call the roll.
David Burris?
Yes.
Bill Lukens?
Yes.
Bob Nelson?
Yes.
Ron Richards?
Yes.
Allison Ritterbusch?
Yes.
Craig Romi?
Yes.
Caitlin Turner?
Yes.
Okay, we do have, that motion is approved. Our next resolution is 2020-7, and that's a resolution to surplus some city property from the wastewater treatment plant. I believe there's some fixtures that have been discarded as a result of repairs that have been made and that can be some valuable scrap. I would ask for a motion to surplus that city property.
Make a motion to approve Resolution 2020-7, a resolution to surplus city property, dirty brass, copper, and stainless steel at the wastewater treatment plant.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to surplus this property. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion?
Are we putting this out for bids or are we going to sell it rapidly?
That remains to be seen, I'm not...
This was worth a lot of money.
Okay.
Yeah.
We, so our next step, and it's spelled out in the, right after the resolution in the documents that you have, is to determine values. We'll use three free holders, those are the people in the community to help value it. I did put the A steel, I called, come the day I prepared that, that the amount of A steel would give us for the dirty brass, copper, and steel.
Is that so much pound?
Yes. And so once we get the free holder's opinion of value, it's over 500, then the requirement is to get bids. So let it go out for public bids.
Do we know how much it weighs?
No, we don't.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, hearing done, all motion in favor of surplusing that city property, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, motion does carry. Moving on to new business, we have a motion to approve the requested tax abatement presented by the Director of Equalization. I'd ask for a motion to approve those tax abatements.
Mayor, I will abstain from this vote.
Okay.
I make a motion to approve the requested tax abatements as presented and submitted by the County of Fall River Director of Equalization, City of Hot Springs, 26623, Olstad, 11878, Whole Homes, 429883, Rasmussen, $12.18, Bankus, 18386, and Miller, 6465.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve these requested tax abatements. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion that we still have, Suzie here to answer to if we have any question? Hearing done, I'd ask all those in favor signify by saying aye. And Misty, will you please note that we have one abstention due to a day job conflict? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is the possible motion in discussion to approve the permit on review for Michelle Erickson to operate that daycare center. Again, we had the public hearing on that. I would accept a motion to approve that permit on review.
I make a motion to, can I make a comment? I make a motion to approve use permit on review for Michelle Erickson to operate home daycare at 1446 Clark Alley in Harton Springs.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve that use permit. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion?
I have some questions. You had mentioned that you had sent your letters out to 11 adjacent property owners, certified mail?
I think it was seven.
Seven, okay. And the letter stated that anybody would have any objections to be here tonight. And they're not. And Bob mentioned that, if I stand correctly, Bob, you're not in the affected area, but you're in support of the idea, you're concerned about the alley, is that correct?
I am not an immediate neighbor, an adjoining neighbor. There is a neighboring property between the Ericksons and myself. I have no objections to what they want to do. I applaud their efforts to doing them. The only concern that I would have with the amount of traffic that would be going up and down the alley and the condition that the alley is in.
I would ask, Bob, excuse me, if you would come forward and speak into the microphone because this is being recorded. We want to make sure that what you're saying is picked up. I apologize for...
No, that's okay. I am not an immediate neighbor to the Ericksons. There is a neighboring property between their property and mine. I have no objections to what they want to do. The only concern that I would have is in the condition of the alley and the accessibility with however many number of cars would be coming in and out. As I had mentioned earlier, the alley is not a highly dedicated alley. It does have millions down on it. And there's, I don't traverse it myself because I have, I have no reason to. But I notice that there are some soft spots at the crest of the hill as I see when I walk by.
And then there was some question about licensing and state requirements. As you mentioned, you folks have spoken with Scott. Scott, any concerns? Have they met all the requirements, you know, from the city of Hot Springs to...
Again, Scott, would you please come forward to the microphone so that we can pick up your answer?
Do you ask it? They had mentioned that they've spoken with you about the requirements that the city is placing on the use on the...
Right, what she, what she asked was about the current need from the city. The state does not require a license. I looked, George had asked about license.
Okay.
And that's the only thing that we really spoke about, but I have no objections.
Okay, so they're meeting all the requirements that the city has. My other question then is, use permit on review. Don't you understand that? To me, it suggests that if something goes awry, it can be reviewed again and stopped or go forward. Are there timeframes on that?
I'm sorry?
Are there timeframes on that?
I think it's yearly. And I'm sorry to say I think, but I believe it's yearly. And the, the use on review is reviewed. And if there were complaints from the neighbor or whatnot, then the use would change. It doesn't go with the building, it goes with the, the use of the building.
Okay, all right. So they've met all the requirements that the city is placing on them?
Yes.
They've sent the registered letters to affected property owners, nearby property owners? And there's no one here to speak either in favor of it or against it? Bob, being an adjacent owner, he's in favor. Okay, thank you. Oh, Bob? Got a new one.
Hi, I'm Larry Grant of the Old Free Road of Thompson Avenue. I applaud what you're doing.
Can you stand closer to the mic, Larry? I'm sorry, that mic just didn't pick up.
How's that, is that better?
Yeah, thank you.
Is that better?
Yes.
I applaud what you're doing. Don't get me wrong. My big concern is, we got, that's going to be also in that area, high traffic. Traffic. And I've been kind of talking with the safety commission for a while. That road over there, they've got it cordoned off. Yeah, you can't park over here, blah, blah, blah. But I see a lot of people speeding through that area. You know, if we're going to get people coming over there and coming to your facility and doing stuff like that, you know, let's maintain the speed in that area too. Put a sign up, 20, 25 miles an hour, that's my concern. Because we have kids that live in that area also, you know that, right? I think those are your kids too? Or other kids that walk up and down the streets also? We also have older people over there, people that walk in the summertime. So yeah, I'm just, that's my concern, living in that area over there.
Okay.
All right?
And Michelle, you had some puzzled look on your face when Larry was speaking and...
I'm just not familiar with his road, you know. I, we've only been in town for about a year, so I'm just not familiar with where he was talking about.
What road are you speaking of, Larry? Is it the alley? Because it's...
No, their alley goes up this way. You got the road that goes back, Ritterbusch's. Ours is on this side over here on Thompson Street by the Skyline Hotel. And there's always people on that main road right there. I mean, yeah, like I'm not going to give names, but I do know a few people that just love to speed up and down that road. I just want, if we're going to have more kids there, then let's provide more safety for these individuals. That's all I'm asking.
Okay, thanks for clarifying.
Thank you, Larry. So when you turn off, what's that main highway you're heading out of town, 305?
Yes.
So when you turn off there, you go a block and a half off that, and that's where our alley is. So, and I'm still not really sure what, where he's talking about. But so as far as increased traffic, it's not very far, it is neighborhood and everything, but it's about a block and a half, so...
From your home?
From the alley to, to that main road. So it's not like they're driving through a big neighborhood to get to our place.
His street is a block south of yours. Where he lives, a block south.
Okay.
Okay. And would your, do you have a fenced in yard? Do you have one of the things that, with the children that you watch over? Be allowed to roam? Free range, I guess?
We won't be a free range daycare at this time. We plan on, we have a acre and a half property, it's pretty large. My plan is to slowly fence it all in. And once that's done, then we'll, we'll take them outside and let them play and everything. At this time, I'm looking at fencing in a certain area with a little playground or something. So at this time, it's not fenced in, but my, our plan is to eventually do that once it's up and running, if there's any coming in.
Okay.
Marilyn Cotty, I guess I'm just going to show my ignorance, but it's the grantor in me that has to ask these questions. And it's certainly not against you two, I don't know you at all, but just for any daycare. My question is, does the ordinance say that you have to have a background check? Which to me would be obvious, you'd have to have a background check before you can allow anyone to take care of children. And sex and all, are there any sex offenders in that neighborhood where the children might be? To me, those are just basic questions that, as a city, you have to ask just before you allow children to go into someone's home.
And Scott, is there any requirement in our ordinance for a background check? And again, I'd ask you to come forward so we can record the answer.
I don't know of any background check that has ever been asked. And I personally have never done a daycare. I know that the use on review went through the front office. When I spoke to these people, who was, what's your first name? Michelle, I'm sorry. We really only spoke about the function of the legal process. And use on review is, if we're not licensing them, we don't, how would we ask that?
Okay. And I think that's one of the requirements for a state license, is to do those background checks. And one of the reasons that I asked that, that question, because of the concerns of ensuring that those background checks and locations are, are checked.
And I can't speak to all sex offenders in the area. I guess I've never looked at that. I'll go on record saying my wife and I have never been arrested. I was a law enforcer for 10 years. So take that for what it's worth. So we've never been arrested as far as background check. Now, like she said, in Aberdeen, South Dakota, she ran a daycare and then the City of Aberdeen, you're licensed through them and it's a pretty rigorous process. It's pre-comparable to becoming state certified. So I would encourage maybe Hot Springs down the road to start looking into that a little bit more, like, like we talked about.
Sure.
That kind of stuff, because as parents, we're fortunate enough that we don't have to send our kids to daycare, but that's probably one of the scariest things you could do is you're putting your, your kids' lives essentially in someone's hands. So I would encourage the, the City of Hot Springs to, in the future, look at how they do this because, to be honest with you, there's just not a lot that you guys expect. So maybe it is time to, to start looking into that stuff. But as far as we know, as far as what the city requires from us, we fulfill all obligations.
Okay.
I have one question for you, Mr. Erickson. You said you've already invested in some gravel for the alley to keep it. Now, if this permit is a go, means you are adding to the traffic, to the alley. Would you find it unfair to financially help the city? Because there's a lot of, there's a lot of alleyways in our community that needs more.
Yep, and I wouldn't be opposed to continue to do what I do, which is buy loads of rock and spread it on the soft spots and all that stuff. But I do think it's unfair for you guys to require that of us because we, we pay our taxes just like everyone else and that's our only access. I do feel that that's part of our taxes. And if someone's on a main road, would you require them to pay extra taxes for, for running this business? I don't know that. I do understand where you're coming from, but I think it sets a pretty dangerous precedent.
And that's one thing that we've asked, be referred to the, to the Public Works Committee to look at.
Just, I, I just wanted to get your opinion.
That is a fine line there. But it's a realistic line.
The problem I have is also is, like I said, I've, I've put rock down and everything, larger rock, because what you guys put down just washes down into my ditch and plugs up the...
Trail gravel, yes.
So the other issue I have with that is, I don't, also don't want to share that cost burden because you guys come through and you guys take all the gravel that I did put down and spread it throughout, or you push it off with your snowplow and everything. So, you know, I, I don't know what it would cost, but I think there needs to be, you know, larger rock or something put down. I don't, I think if larger rock was put down, it would really, it wouldn't be an issue at all.
So what are you putting down, three inch?
I'm, I'm not sure off the top of my head what it is. But it's larger because of the slope. What you guys put down just washes down into the ditch.
Okay, I just wanted to ask you...
No, I appreciate that question, it's a good question, but I, you know, I think it's an unfair burden to put on us starting out and everything. But I understand where you're coming from. But, but like I said, just because essentially we're being penalized because we live in an alley. Because if someone was living on a main asphalt road, you know, you wouldn't go to them.
No, I understand, I understand. But I just wanted to fill you up to see what you're...
Yeah.
Okay, are there any other pertinent questions or discussion? If not, we do have a motion on the floor and it has been seconded. I'd go ahead and ask Misty if you'd call the roll.
All right, so a reminder, the motion is to approve a use permit on review. We had a lot of discussion about a lot of other stuff, that's what you're pulling on. David Burris?
Yes.
Bill Lukens?
Yes.
Bob Nelson?
Yes.
Ron Richards?
Yes.
Allison Ritterbusch?
Yes.
Craig Romi?
Yes.
Caitlin Turner?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. And also, Bob, I'd like to also refer to the Admin Finance to look at the licensing requirements, if that's something we may want to make our licensing requirements concurrent with what the state requires.
All right.
To answer some of those concerns. Again, we appreciate your, your willingness to take that burden on and wish you best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you both.
Okay, we move on to the next item on our agenda is the motion and discussion to approve the permit on review for quality real estate to allow the operation of the RV park here in Hot Springs. Again, we had a public hearing earlier. I would ask for a motion to approve the permit on review.
I'll make a motion to approve a use permit on review for quality real estate to allow the operation of an RV park and campground of approximately 12.5 acres of undeveloped property located on the US Highway 18 truck bypass in Hot Springs.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve this permit on review for the RV campground. We've had the public hearing. Are there any further questions, comments or discussion from the council? Hearing done. I'd ask Misty if you'd call roll.
David Burris?
Yes.
Bill Lukens?
Yes.
Bob Nelson?
Yes.
Ron Richards?
Yes.
Allison Ritterbusch?
Yes.
Craig Romi?
Yes.
Caitlin Turner?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, we do have that approved. And again, we want to thank you for wanting to make an investment in our community. We're excited to have an RV park that will bring visitors to stay in Hot Springs, year round. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, we have item D is removed from the, the next item is the discussion and the motion to approve a burning of the brush at the city maintenance facility. I would accept a motion to approve the burning of brush.
Make a motion to approve burning of the brush pile at the city maintenance facility.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the brush burning. Our last to comply with the state DENR waiver that was given. And I did provide the council with an email with the procedures that we, we do intend to use. I want to thank you, Bob, Bill and Dave and Craig for the involved detailed discussion that went through the planning of that, along with Allison was, was involved in that also. And I just wanted to make sure that you and the public know that it isn't a decision that we've taken lightly. The first step is to approve that tonight. Then John and myself will be the coordination focal point. I've asked Dave to assist Billy in the maintenance because of your experience with brush burning to assist the getting the pile prepared so that it can be burned. And determining a date will be based on weather. And we do have coordination with the South Dakota Wildlife and Fire who will be coordinating with the weather to determine and ensure that we have favorable conditions. And by favorable conditions, we mean that there will be no inversion that will keep that smoke in the valley, but we will have a good burn day with sufficient wind and no inversion to dissipate the smoke. And that will be our primary consideration. As that, that day may come quickly, we don't know when it will come. We do have plans then to gather the group and make a decision as to whether we should burn it or not. We'll have a lot of people that will have to notify. We want to know, notify the public through social media, the city's website, local radio station. Our police department will need to be involved in the event that, for some reason, the weather changes on us and we do have some spoke that does settle. We will have to notify DENR to ensure that they're knowing that they want to monitor what goes on. And one of the big things, and Bob, I really want to thank you for all the pre-work you've done in working with the businesses and Fall River Health Services. And that's another area that we will have to make notifications. And I'm asking you and Councilman Romi to, to assist in making sure that we get feedback from places like Fall River Health, the State Veterans Home, Pine Hills, State USA, Baymont, Econo Lodge, Hills Inn and any other business that might be affected by that. And should there be any kind of circumstances that would preclude us burning, then that would be brought back. And once we, we get all of that information, we'll make one final decision. Bill has a lot of experience with, with fire and safety. I've asked him to be the one that gives final authorization to light the brush pile after all the information is gathered. And any kind of concerns that arise or media will be directed to myself or the city administrator. We want to make sure that it's done safely and that's why we came up with the, the procedures. And I wanted to make sure that you as a council and the public understands that it's not just, we're going to pick a day and suddenly light. There's a lot of thought that went behind it. And so with that, and with the motion being made, are there any further questions, comments or discussion concerning the burning?
Pardon?
You have to bring your own hot dogs and marshmallows. We didn't, didn't put that in the plan. Hearing done. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And again, a reminder, that is a one-time, one-time burn that we'll be doing. Item F, we do have a possible motion to reappoint Jan Wiser to the cemetery board for a five-year term. I'd ask for a motion to make that reappointment.
I'm going to abstain from this as well.
Okay.
I'd make the motion to reappoint Jan Wiser to the cemetery board for a term of five years, enter 2019 to 2023.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to make this reappointment. Are there any discussion? Hearing done. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries. Moving on, we have a training request for Mary and Barb to attend a Microsoft Excel in Rapid City, April 4th through, and 17th, April 16th and 17th. I'd accept the motion to approve that travel and training request.
I'll make a motion to approve a travel and training request for Mary Party, Barb Benson, to attend a Microsoft Excel basics and beyond, the basics seminar in Rapid City on April 16th, 2020, and April 17th, 2020. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve that request. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion?
I'll be abstaining from this.
Okay, so we've got two abstentions.
No, just one.
Or just one. I'm sorry, Caitlin. I'm looking at you and you've been abstaining and all that. So we've got one abstention, and that's Craig. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that is approved. We do have a motion and discussion to send Mike Close to attend a statewide sex offender registry conference in April in Deadwood, the 19th through the 21st. I'd accept a motion to approve that travel.
And make a motion to approve travel training requests from Chief Mike Close to attend the statewide sex offender registry conference in Deadwood from April 19th through April 21st.
Second.
They're moved and seconded to approve that travel training. Any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Move on to our finance officer report, Misty.
Thank you. I have provided the following financial reports through the 30th of January, so again, not exclusive of all of January. That's the year-to-date profit and loss summary. This one looks a little rough the first few months of the year. The fund summary report, which shows you expenses, budget versus actual, both revenue and expenses by fund. The cash balance report, and investment reports, which include all of the cash assets of the city. Note on my memo, the first few months of the year typically slow for revenue collection. Many receipts are considered receivables and posted back to December 2019, and very heavy on expenses, with many annual expenses being paid in the early months of the year. We do, once again, have a good plan, which is our budget, and we expect this condition to improve as the year progresses. I mention this so the red numbers don't alarm you, but as always, if you're concerned about any of the reports I provide to you on a monthly basis, please ask questions. I plan to spend most of February focused on the preparation of the 2019 financial statements. I talked a little bit about those in some of my other memos. I do hope that this is the last batch of payables that you'll see for 2019, but last year we did have a very small batch of the second meeting in February, and if we do have any more expenses come in, we'll allow one more batch in February. It is important to finalize those so that I can start the preparation of those financial statements that have to do with cash and payables and receivables. Please bear with me as I focus my time and attention on this very important task, and know when you come in and I'm staring at those spreadsheets, that I'm doing the best I can, and so if you start to talk to me and I don't turn away right away, I'm just trying to get some thoughts finalized and get some things down before I focus my attention on you. We've talked a little bit about the 2020 municipal election. I just gave another, a written summary of the numbers that will be required on the nominating petitions by Ward. We do have six council seats and one mayoral seat up for election, so hopefully we have some great potential. It's been good to see the people coming to the meetings, and remember that if you really want to have a big impact, you can sure come up here and represent your ward and your city and help make these tough decisions that our council members do. The dates and locations for the 2020 SDML district meetings have been announced. Our district is nine, and it's scheduled for Wednesday, April 1st. It's in New Underwood this year. Registrations are due by March 18th. Mayors, council members, city officials, and guests are welcome to attend the meeting. One of the highlights, Yvonne Taylor, the executive director of the SDML, gives a detailed update about new legislation. There's also a variety of representatives from state agencies and other elected officials to visit them during the dinner. If you aren't interested in attending the event, let me know. I do highly recommend attendance. I talked a little bit about the 26th Street water distribution improvement project. The increases per lot were $64.31 per year. I appreciate the 10-year confirmation on the resolution for the term. The next step will be to publish the resolution adopting the assessment roll, preparing the record of assessments, mailing the assessed owners a notice specifying the amount, the number of installments to date of approval, and notice that any number of installments can be paid without interest at the finance office prior to certifying the annual assessments to the county auditor's office. I have an idea that I'm going to float with admin finance, and I explained a little bit in my memo. There's always so much happening in the operation of the city. It amazes me the number of things that get done by different departments each and every day. Although, council, you're not employees, the same is true in your position. In the public from day to day, and in the various committee meetings, you're tasked with listening, hearing, understanding, troubleshooting, and considering any number of things related to the operation of the city. Our committees help to facilitate communication between employees, management, the public, and the governing body. Discussion items can include things such as changes in policies, hours of operations, insurance, zoning, procurement, ordinance revisions, enforcement topics and issues, infrastructure improvements, public complaints, public safety, personnel topics, city licensing and permitting, contracts, building repairs and maintenance, fees for services and charges, potential abatements and assessments, grants, programming, et cetera. I mean, really, the list could go on and on, what you're asked to consider. Although our committees are primarily established to be only advisory in nature, they do a great deal of the work involved in getting the information needed to allow the city through council action to make well-educated research decisions that are in the best interest of the city as a whole. Committees don't make decisions, they make recommendations, or simply hear and then refer research topics to the full council for action. So going forward, I would like to request that topics discussed during committee reports that will be referred to or recommended to the full council be printed and published in the minutes of the meeting. So I'll need each of your help in identifying items from your various committees that will be moved forward to the full council for consideration. I know there'll be some great areas when implementing this change. My goal is to ensure proper public notification, full transparency, and added awareness to the public from the topics that we're discussing in our committees. I do believe keeping the best interests of the city as a whole at the forefront of all our decision-making will keep Hot Springs moving in the right direction. I just know it. I do thank you for your efforts, all of you, from the public, to the employees, to the governing body. If you're trying to help move Hot Springs forward, you're truly what's great about this town. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Misty. City Administrator John?
Good evening. It's been a busy meeting. It's been a busy two weeks. Work is continued on this brush pile burning. We had quite a few discussions about restricted use, solid waste facility limitations with the brush pile burning. We did get the DE and R determination of burning approval this one last time, and they had those provisions which were implemented into the development of policies and procedures planned. Mary prepared, did include a council approval and assignment of point of contact, burn pile preparation procedures to come up with maximum combustion. The data burn will be dependent upon prevailing weather, which we decided guided from the South Dakota Wildland Fire Group. We'll have notifications for public as a protocol, including on our website, and also a notice in our radio station. We'll have the burn procedure, and we'll have monitoring and extension that fire when it's over with. So it's not just don't want to match on this thing and watching it go this year. It's been well thought out, thoughtfully discussed, and we looked at all options. Bob, we make a point to look at everything. Was this the only option, or was there something else we could consider? And cost effectively, the burning option this time was the most cost effective, but looking forward, we've got other decisions to make about how we're going to shift this material and movement, and where it's going to go next time. We're still working on that situation. West Oak Building, it's been a constant topic of conversation. We did make available all the engineering reports are available for public inspection in my office, and I'm out there, and the front desk people have access to it, and it's always available. Anybody wants to view where we're at with the engineering documents. Had a lot of inquiries from the public, contractors, and the newspaper about where we're at with the West Oak, and discussions with neighboring property owners. We'd also ask for additional professional services proposal for the demolition procedures, and also the stabilization of the facade of that building. Have you prepare DOT permits for a right-of-way access, put that barricade in place, put a sidewalk access through it. Work is continuing with the DOT on the Highway 18385 plan. We've had the seismic construction vibration meeting that will be here from mid-May through mid-September, monitoring by SAE or engineering the existing vibration we're getting from truck traffic through our tourism season, and that will become the effective threshold if they can vibrate our streets during actual construction. Talked about pedestrian crosswalks, they would be grew, the thermoplastic reflective striping, it will get worn off in the flowers and snow each year. We've got a planning organizational meeting planned within this Thursday, February 17th. Had a meeting with the South Dakota Pipeline Association. They did an incident response event, an introduction to training of Red Rock. It was attended well by our AMA and fire response operation. The South Dakota Office of Emergency Management has a hazard mitigation grant that we've been working on for a state-level theme of planning objectives on emergency generator for use on a water pump station. The Chamber of Commerce with the balloon festival pre-planning, the toys and season advertising, and local events calendar and planning, big things like the Evans Point's 130th anniversary, and the Chamber of Commerce 80th anniversary. Welcome our new mechanic at the airport. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. A busy, busy time. Well, as far as the mayor's report, I do have what I think is some good news to announce. We did have an opportunity to consult with South Dakota DOT, the engineering folks, and they have offered us the $2.8 million addition to the road construction to add this suspended sidewalk that we're doing to help mitigate a safety problem and to also hopefully spur some additional development in our downtown area. The conditions, the city is responsible for university, with the exception of the two box filled bridges. We got those removed from that, which was very, very, something that we were adamant that would not, would not happen. And we want to also thank the governor's office, their staff worked with DOT on making sure that that happened. The city will design, be responsible for designing the section along North River Street. We'll use our contractor ISG under the supervision of a approved design firm. We would be responsible for the maintenance of the sidewalk and getting concurrence from the US Corps of Engineers, and John is already working on a letter to inform them of what we're going to do since the suspended sidewalk does not touch the flood wall, and it is well above the FEMA level of flooding. DOT will be drafting, using their attorneys to draft a formal agreement that will be brought to the council for approval or disapproval, and just, I think that's some really good outstanding news because we just could not afford to be responsible for the maintenance and replacement of those bridges. That $2.8 million should cover all the costs of design and construction, but again, those cost estimates were prepared last, last summer and could change as the program develops. Again, I want to reiterate, the big concern is the safety issue, and not that the sidewalk over the river is more safe than a sidewalk against the buildings, but where the safety issue comes in is the size of the traffic lanes. The current DOT design squishes those traffic lanes in to where, we've had Bill do a study of, that they're dangerously narrow, and by going with the suspended sidewalk, we add at least two feet to those traffic lanes, making them wider, giving people more of an opportunity to avoid the extensive traffic that we have there, especially during the summer. And I know personally, I've seen two very close near misses just looking out the office window and standing on the pedestrian bridge there. So we're excited about that opportunity, and again, we look forward to the legal draft coming from DOT, hopefully within a few weeks, and we'll be reviewing that and presenting that to the council, and of course, that'll go through Public Works to take the primary lead on that. And one final note, we do have the final sales tax receipts in for this year. It's been a record year for Hot Springs. Took in $1.717 million of sales tax, and that's, that's, that's a, that's a record year. $75,000 above last year, and $108,000 above 2017, and that's very good news for Hot Springs, particularly one of our largest retailers was closed for most of the year. Wind Cave was, had an elevator that was inoperative for much of the summer, so two big drivers to bring people to Hot Springs were, were down. So very, very happy about that. Shows that we're a growing community, and we hope to keep that, that going. Again, Kara and Casey, I want to please get information to us so we can continue keeping you in the loop, the historic preservation committee in the loop, and Public Works in the loop concerning the, the work on the West Oak building. A lot of different things have to come together, and we want to keep the communication lines open. We appreciate your passion and the passion to keep that building, and we certainly feel likewise. And with that, my report is done. I'd accept a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
They're moved and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.